You're returning, right?
(laughing).
I can't last that long.
Super glue on the floor.[511.87][511.87](laughing). We'll just go ahead and start that process. All righty, are we ready? Are we all happy? Good, it's been successful.[537.16][537.16](laughing).
You've accomplished what you've set out to accomplish. It's making me unhappy.
All right, at this time, we'll call to order the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners for a meeting of July 10, 2023. Let the record reflect that we have a quorum of all three commissioners. If you would all rise, will pledge, say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item, approval of executive session memorandum of today.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item, approval of minutes of 6:26:23.
Motion to approve.
Aye.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Bit opening, contract 23-01, various roads in Jackson and White River townships. Has everyone in the audience submitted their proposals? Mike Howard, do you have those?
Yes.
Will you start the process of opening?
First, bid packet is from Reece Riley, their Form 96 with non collusion affidavit. Their financials are in place, their... They include their bid bond and they acknowledge receipt of both addenda. Their base bid, there's no alternative yet. Their base bid, $1,437,300. Next bid is from DL Construction Services. Their Form 96, non collusion affidavit are included.
DL, DC.
DL is DC.
DC.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It's not a very good C, but it's DC, thank you. They acknowledge receipt of both addenda. Their bid bond is also included, their bid, $1,481,267.36. The next bid packet is from... Resurface, I'm sorry, County Met. They're, they acknowledge receipt of both addenda, their bid bond, Form 96, non collusion affidavit, and financial statements are included. Their bid, $1,811,000 even. The next bid packet is from E&amp;B Paving. Their Form 96. Bid bond, financial statements are all included. Their bid, $1,432,069.69. The next bid packet is from... Howard Companies, no relation. Their financial statement are included, their Form 96, non collusion affidavit are also included, as is their bid bond. Their bid, $1,433,250.30.
Pretty close, isn't it?
Boy, they're all, those are all close.
Yeah, this is amazing. Oh, by the way, their financial statements are included and sealed to be held until a later date if they are a successful bidder. Next bid packet is from Midwest Paving. Their financial statements are included and sealed in the event they are the parent bidder, low bidder. Their bid bond, Form 96, and non collusion affidavit are all included, their bid. They acknowledge receipt of the addenda. The next bid packet is from Milestone. Their Form 96 with non collusion affidavit is included. They include their financial statements. Their bid bond. And acknowledge receipt of the addenda. Their base bid, $1,598,000. That appears to be all bids on this project. There ain't persons present, nor any other bids that should have been open today. None appearing recommend that the bids be referred to the Highway Department for review and recommendation later in this meeting.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And a thank you to all the companies that have taken the time to submit bids. We appreciate them. Next item, highway business.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today I have one open road cut permit for your consideration. This is on 199th Street, approximately 2,600 feet west of Tomlinson Road. They're installing a new storm sewer for regulated drainage reconstruction. Recommend board approve.
So move. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item... Sorry, lost my cheat sheet. I have no private traffic control permits, no vehicle exemption permits. I have a list dated July 10, 2023 of bonds and letters of credit for acceptance. Would recommend you accept.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I have no bonds or letters of credit for release, no agreements or supplements, which brings me to a support letter, the 236th Street Phase Two project, David and Linda Hodgson, District Attorney, VCA. This is a parcel that we bought additional right of way, which caused the right of way line to be closer to the house. They want to build a new house behind it, but they need a variance to do so. This is a letter with our supporting that, it is for the president's signature.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I have no acceptance of streets, concurrence of traffic study correspondence, public works quotation results, official actions, correspondence of announcements. I think the last thing Brad has.
I've got this letter for your consideration that will go in with our application for the next little grant program, IDNR's program. This will be for funding to try and construct Phase Two of the Stephen Nation Trail, which would connect Potter's Bridge up to 234th Street along Cumberland Road. So we need a letter to go in with our application, mainly just to commit to our match, but also as part of what the IDNR wants is if there happens to be a need for eminent domain, that we are willing to do that in order to keep the project going. And so this will be for your approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Moving on to E-911, Public Safety Communications. Ryan, are you presenting?
Sure.
There's Mr. Cox. Well, how convenient, come on up.
First three, the meal authorizations. There's three of them, do you want to take them all together or separately?
Separately.
Okay. So the first one I'll give you is our committee that's touring different sites. We went out to Washington, we provided lunch for the group, and so we're seeking board's authorization for that expense, $441.75.
Your motion.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The second one is we're seeking board approval for our annual holiday meal that we provide to the staff that works on Christmas and Thanksgiving, which just allows us to go ahead and get the order in ahead of time.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And the third and final one that I have for you is our annual meeting that we have for the staff. Some of you attended it last year at the FOP, and we're just seeking approval for that meal portion of that event, awards, and our annual meeting with our staff.
Motion to approve.
Aye.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And before you step away, are we planning, we're going to go to Houston and Nashville to look at two other centers. Are you anticipating doing a lunch or some type of token of appreciation at those two sites?
We have some tokens of appreciation that we have.
Okay, do you need any budgetary approval before?
I don't think so, we have that within our budget.
Okay, thanks.
Good afternoon, commissioners. You received the request, the written request. I'm requesting permission to allow the employees listed here to exceed the $10,000 allotment due to the overtime encumbered from our manpower situation. It's been a busy summer for us, so the individuals we have there have been working their tails off, and I just want to get permission to pay them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Do you think that's sufficient, or do you think you may be back?
I think this is sufficient to the end of the year, ma'am.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Jason Developmental, or Janus, Jason, Janus Developmental Services, so sorry, Roscoe.[1317.66][1317.66](laughing).
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Greetings from Janus Developmental Services, greetings from our President/CEO, who was not able to be here, Elanza Kincaid. I'm Roscoe Brown, Director of Transportation, and with me is Kim Lefler, who is our Chief Financial Officer. We come before you presenting the Provider Professional Services Agreement between Hamlet County and Janus Developmental Services, who is the operator of Hamlet County Express Public Transportation. This is for year 2023, and we present that to you. This is our for the federal assistance through the Section 5307, FTA funds, between the county and Janus Developmental Services operating Hamlet County Express.
And Connor, you've reviewed the contract?
Yes, it's an exact same one as you guys signed last year, just changing the dates, obviously in different dollar amounts, but it's essentially identical to the one previously...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Annual Countywide 4D Cost Allocation Plan. Mr. Vaughn.
Good afternoon, I'm David Vaughn with Malinowski Consulting. We had proposed or sent an agreement proposal for continuing to do the annual cost allocation plan for the Title 4D program. And just a real brief synopsis of what this is, is the county conducts the Title 4D program and is owed money back for every dollar that is spent. The prosecutor and clerk claim it on a direct basis, on a monthly basis. The annual cost allocation plan looks at all of the indirect costs associated with that, payroll, security, heating, lighting, billing, maintenance, everything. We've been doing this in the county since 2005 and have brought back about $3.7 million. The nice thing about this program is it can be paid for out of county incentive money, which is money that can only be used for Title 4D purposes. So basically, the long and short of it is, the county general fund will receive all of the reimbursements but pay for none of the costs. Our agreement is just an extension to do it three more years. We're currently in our last year doing the 2022 plan, and this would allow us to work on '23 through '2025.
And Connor, you've reviewed this contract, and I know it's got three years that's listed on that, and have your thoughts?
Yeah, there's a clause in there that provides 30, if there's written 30-day notice, you can, either party can terminate it, and I believe this is what we've typically done correct before, that it's typical come back in every three years, but there is an option if either side were to want to terminate that, that is...
Or if we don't get the appropriation.
Or, yeah.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Aye.
About to say, we don't invoice you until the check arrives, so if you all didn't get paid, we will not invoice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Emergency management, Shane.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have a simple meal request, authorization for EOC activation during one of the recent storm operations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Safety risk, is Mr. Rushford here? We're getting ahead of ourselves, so, huh, we have someone in.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Rushford is present, and I'm Rebecca Schott, Assistant Safety Nurse Manager, presenting on behalf of our department today.
Mm-hmm.
We have three items to present before you, the first of which is an authorization request from the reliability trust for an internal claim that was established by our department for the Hinkton County surveyor. A hammer drill, which belonged to them, fell off of one of their county vehicles in motion while it was leaving a job site. When the employees returned to retrieve it, it was missing and reported stolen. A replacement was found from Sunbelt Rentals, and we're requesting payment for that related employees in the amount of $1,000.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number two is a request of authorization and payment for repair of the reliability claim. A county employee struck a post with his or her county vehicle on June, and a repair estimate was obtained from hair estis collision of carmel. There was moderate damage sustained to the vehicle. For our review, there is no concern that this vehicle would be in total loss. We do recommend repair of this vehicle, therefore we are requesting authorization for repair and payment.
Is this the $5,821?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, we present to you our amended exposure control plan for bloodborne pathogens. This plan was originally drafted and adopted in 2019. Our department has since made needed updates, and we request your authorization, your approval, and your signature on the final.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Plan Commission, Mr. Taylor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. You should have before you a certificate of action. The Hamilton County Plan Commission did on June 27 approve six yes votes, zero no votes to send a favorable recommendation for you to adopt the new, further revised Hamilton County Unified Developmental Plans.
Move.
Second.
Discussion. Got a couple questions, just the excerpts that changed. So I've got a couple in context that should be simple. We talk about floodway, and we talk about fences and that type of thing in the ordinance with changes. Do we have some kind of disclaimer language in there that Plan Commission approval is only preliminary, you may need to check with other controlling entities such as Drainage Board, such as FEMA, that type of thing?
Yes, it is, it's in our flood clean section of the ordinance.
Okay.
And that's candid to us from DNR and FEMA, so we basically adopt their language for that.
Okay, what about Drainage Board?
And then that's covered in there as well, and then in our fence section, there, you have to start with the Drainage Board in the fence section also.
Okay, so you're the last stop on the road?
Yeah, they usually come to my office first, but it has to get everybody else before me.
That, you might, if you would, do you have meetings with the other local Plan Commission directors?
Not on a regular basis, no.
If you would, could you send your language to the various entities? Because we continually have problems with building permits, just as a reminder, and having the last stop on the road being... And having the last stop on the road being the Plan Commission or the Planning Director, I think is brilliant, because that way, if they would set up their system, then I think we could avoid a lot of misplaced fences and expense and time for everybody. So they may choose to adopt it or not, but I like the concept.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did anybody else have questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
A lot more specific, it looks good. Is Chris Mertens here? ISSD Network Solutions Project Change Order Request.
Hello, this is a change order for the wireless project we have going on. We are adding a number of wireless access points throughout the two buildings downtown here, and as we've done that, we've discovered that we would like to add a third controller that will allow us to do maintenance without any wireless access points going down across all the buildings.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Let's go back to the ordinance. I just realized this was an amendment to the ordinance, and I believe that we should also adopt a resolution allowing for it to be determined on first reading. We did not do that.
An amendment?
It's the same as restating an ordinance, I believe.
It starts new, it is new language, so you do need to suspend the rules.
Okay, make a motion, we suspend the rules and pass on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and do we ratify the prior vote?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Community Development Block Room. Ms. Westermeier.
Good afternoon. Today, I bring before you several items for your consideration. The first item is a series of tribal consultation requests. It is, again, part of that environmental review process that we are required to go through. It's required that we submit letters to interested tribal parties within the area to get input from them on any concerns they may have or cultural significance on any of the projects we're working on. I have three sets of those tribal consultation letters for you. The first one was for the Family Promise Town Homes at Stony Creek, that project. The second one is the Plum Prairie Project that Hand Incorporated is undertaking. And then the third one is a sidewalk project on behalf of Westfield along Blackburn Road. So I just, for your review of those and final signature.
This is the same procedure we followed on some of the 236th Street projects where there was some evidence that there may have been early American brown grounds, and these are exactly the same issue.
So is it gonna be most any project we do in the county, or?
Yes, this will be part, yeah, one of those steps that we have to do now, yes.
I think all the good consultants have it on their checklist.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The second item is two funding agreements with the city of Noblesville. The first is an amendment to their funding agreement for their Division Street project that was from program year 2021. The amendment is just changing the final closing date of that project from December 15th to July 15th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
The second item with Noblesville is their funding agreement for the Christian Avenue Sidewalk Project that they have proposed for program year 2022 funding. The total allocation and funding agreement is for $92,164.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And the last item, kind of a large item for you, just for your review. We have the annual action plan, draft for the annual action plan for program year 2023 put together. It will be posted on the county's website as well as the Noblesville Housing Authority's website for public comment starting tomorrow, July 11th, and will run for 30 days and conclude on August 9. The total allocations for program year 2023, the county will, can anticipate receiving $1,102,310 in total. We do have an additional $348,095 from previous years to reallocate, so that would give us a grand total of $1,450,405 for program year 23. We did receive a couple of applications as part of this process. The first application we received was from Hand requesting $300,000 for the development of workforce affordable housing, location yet to be determined. The second application was from Family Promise in the amount of $30,000 for the public services homeless prevention services they provide. And then an application from the city of Noblesville. They are looking to continue their sidewalk replacement, focusing on the Southwest Quad for that, for that funding. Their requested amount was $110,726,000.
And that money would come out of their allocation?
Yes, yes.
Motion to approve.
No, well, this is not to be approved, it's to be posted for review and consideration.
Yes, I would come back at next week.
Do we need to approve it, though, to be posted?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Because it won't be finalized until we've had the public comment.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have the originals on the letters, the environmental tribal?
If they are, they're probably in there, I don't know. The packet Steve Dillinger has.
Oh, okay, is it in that? Okay, thank you. Commissioner or committee reports?
On Saturday, I attended the Hamilton County Resource Fair. We had over 250 veterans from all throughout our county that showed up. It was so successful that we've decided that we're gonna do this on an annual basis. So we couldn't believe that, how many veterans showed up for this resource fair on Saturday? It was very well attended.
Very good. Mr. Dillinger. We, I continue to work on the audit, trying to resolve Hamilton East being included. We did receive a legal opinion that they were not a rig, an entity that needed to be combined. We'll see where we'll get the state board of accounts.
Attorney.
I have two things for you. The first is a financial aid agreement, this is between Hamilton County and the IFA. This is for the $20 million that was included in the state budget for Phase Two of the Hamilton County Regional Utility District's infrastructure project. It is identical to the funding agreement for the first $10 million, but does not require us to use American Steel or prevailing wage requirements. And so that was, that was a very nice piece of information we received when we're going through this. This is for, just for Phase Two, and I have Marty Wesler here from Wesler Engineering, too, if there's any other questions that you might have that I might not be able to answer. But again, I just have a financial aid agreement for your approval for us to receive $20 million from the IFA for Phase Two.
Some move.
Second.
It's only Commissioner Altman's signature, actually, sorry.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
The second item I have is Resolution Number 071023-1. That just authorizes whoever is the Board of Commissioners' president for the year to be the signing party for the county for any claim or dispersment between the county and the IFA for this $20 million if they come up. There is a process in place, and Steve Wood, the Hamilton County Abilities and Groundsuit Lieutenant, will also be reviewing, approving these as well, and he'll have them handed over to you guys and submitted to the IFA for payment. But again, that's Resolution 071023-1.
Some of.
That is just Commissioner Altman's signature as well.
Second.
Discussion. That raises, all in favor?
Aye.
But that raises another issue, and I'm glad Chris Mertens, you're still in the room. Increasingly, we have electronic signature requests that come via email without any notice coming from a department or elected official that something needs to be signed. And with the increase of phishing emails, they're very concerning. So if I, if your department could think about and work with Lee a process that we can adopt with a verification of any request or a preliminary email or verification, it would be very much appreciated.
Yeah, I mean, we have DocuSign that we own here in the county, as well as eSign, another product called eSign, and both of those generate the emails automatically for the people they go out to. You know, Mark, you emailed me Friday about a document that somebody was wanting. Unfortunately.
It was a phishing exercise.
It was kind of a, that was a, that was one we sent you, but those are used a lot.
I, if I have one that's even questionable, I always forward it to you and ask you if it's legit.
But yeah, we can talk and figure out.
We ought to have a process in place.
I have a process, that's just what I'm saying. I don't know what to do anyway, so.
Well, no, but there are legitimate requests, especially on federal funding and that kind of thing. So we've gotta come out with.
With Workday coming online, I know within the HR spectrum, anyway, a lot of their documents are gonna be handled with electronic signature. Now, I don't think those would go to you all necessarily, but they would be going to department heads potentially, and then new hires, so we'll see a lot more of it, for sure.
Well, they all look official, so, and just, we need that, probably sooner than later.
Okay, I'll talk to them.
Thank you.
Thanks, that'd be wonderful.
Attorney Sullivan, I just had a quick question on the Baker's Corner and the water, and wastewater project that we're doing there. You mentioned, this was Phase Two that we were doing with the 20 million. The 10 million that we got for Phase One, has that already been received then? And how is that being allocated?
Yes, you guys executed that agreement with the IFA at the end of 2022, and we are currently using, making draws on that. We're sitting invoices to be paid from the, by the IFA, and we are using those funds currently.
I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record, because we got 30 million.
Yes, it's 30 million total, and this is just for Phase Two.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think that's all I have. Might you have anything? No, fine.
Director of Administration.
Yes.
Remembers you this time.
It's always good to be remembered.
In a positive way.
Ten times, no, no.
I just have a few things this afternoon. First off, presenting for your information approval. I received a request from Susan Peterson, 4H, requesting your approval for staff who work at the fairgrounds during the county fair to be eligible for earning up to 15 additional hours of compensatory time since they frequently work extremely long hours during the fair season. These additional hours would be conditioned on the restriction that the additional hours are used within two pay periods after the end of the fair. It's my understanding this will be the 12th consecutive year of this request, and I believe that this body has approved it the last 11 times.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll notify Ms. Peterson. Also presenting for your information and the ratification of approval, I had received a request from Sue Mackey regarding employing the services of a local Hamilton County nonprofit grant consulting professional to assist the nonprofit grant selection committee with organizing and streamlining the selection processes they review. I think it's just under 30 grant applications. This individual assisted last year on a voluntary basis, and Sue is requesting that.
What's that, Liz Tate?
It would be.
Yeah, she did a great job last year.
Minor, and she's.
She did a great job.
The total fee would be $500. I believe that this would save significant time in helping to expedite the committee.
Did the council listen to it?
Well, this was a committee.
The committee makes.
This was a committee that we, and she went through and.
Recommended to the council.
Yeah, diagnostics of, to the committee.
Not, she didn't assist the council directly. She assisted the committee that met as they were going through page by page.
So did the council adhere to the committee's recommendation?
Yes.
The council did, my understanding is.
They did, they did.
Adhere to the committee.
I was on that, I was on that committee last year. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Good, because I'm on the committee this year.
I know, congratulations.
Good for you.
Next, I just wanted to make you aware that Buckland and Associates has been working on preparing the 2023 Hamilton County appraisal reports. I've received two volumes thus far of what I anticipate is going to be three total volumes of the appraisals of all of the county properties. They still have, I believe, the Cox Hall Mansion, the amphitheater, and bell towers in Carmel to complete, but they'll be working on that later this month. And we've received the first invoice from them. We're still waiting additional invoices, but that budget, money was budgeted for this year's budget to cover the expenses for that. I just wanted to make you aware, and I presented you guys with electronic copies of those in case you wanted to see the appraisal reports. Next thing I wanted to do is just update you on the countywide efforts for the solar, 2024 solar eclipse. County officials and officials throughout the county with all of the municipalities in the county have been meeting regularly, prepare for the major event that is headed our way on Monday, April 8th, 2024. For your information, it's gonna arrive approximately 3:06 PM is when the total eclipse will occur, although the sky will begin to darken about an hour and a half before that. Hamilton County Department Heads and Involved Staff met earlier today via Teams. Over the last several months, there have been several inquiries or requests that Board of Commissioners consider potentially declaring April 8th be designated as a half day for county employees so that nonessential personnel will be either able to assist with the county-sponsored events that are gonna be taking place at multiple parks throughout the county or to otherwise observe the total solar eclipse that is a, at least once-in-a-lifetime event in this area of the country.
Well, imagine if they're assisting, they can still look up.
Yes, yes, I think that that's, that's fair to say. So at this point, whether you want to vote on it today or take it under advisement, but I would ask you to consider designating Monday, April 8th, 2024 as a half day for nonessential employees, and then in some way, other way, compensate those that will be working through that so that everybody gets treated.
Yeah, I'd prefer to handle it as one package, and I think we do need to, not only on this event, but other events where essential workers are working and others are not, figure out a ratable way or a fair way to keep compensation.
Have you talked with the court?
I have not talked to the courts, but I, in anticipation, if we make this decision early, they'll have, at this point, they would have about nine months in advance, very few have trial calendars.
They could exceed that?
That, that either exceed that or that they can't accommodate, especially for, if you're only talking about half day.
Yeah, could you send a letter to Jill? Yeah, could you send a letter to Jill and have her fold the courts that were considering that? If they have any comments, to let us know.
I will do that.
So we'll just take that under advisement.
Thank you, and that's all I had for today.
Thank you.
I will take up with Gina Randall and the personnel committee what we can do to make it equitable for those people that you're talking about.
Well, I think in general also, because when we close for snow, I mean, there's.
I know.
You've got people that work their tails off and others that get a snow day, so.
That's the reason it needs to be careful the way it's ordered, so everything be inclusive into that.
Okay. Sure.
I don't have anything for you. Thank you.
Very good. On enter.
First, I have liability trust claims report for your signature.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And next I have acceptance of bonds and letters of credit for your approval.
Second, or motion to approve. You disrupted me.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I have payroll claims for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, I have, yeah. Lastly, I have vendor claims for your approval.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Ooh, do we have a?
I believe if I have one omitted, may I have it tonight?
Jumped it. Just jumped it.
I apologize.
Just jumped it.
I wanted to put in a request for raising of potential comp time for Byron.
Settles.
Settles, thank you. Who, as all of you are aware, puts in considerable amount of time assisting this body with events throughout the county on multiple occasions. We would ask that his comp time maximum be lifted to 37.5 from point hours.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Who's, who directs his time, or is he more or less autonomous?
I believe it would probably be CJ.
CJ, you're in, okay. Thank you.
I want to thank CJ for the reminder.
Okay, I believe Highway has a pressing matter.
Do. We reviewed all the bids open earlier today, and the apparent low bidder from earlier was confirmed as the low bidder. So we are recommending an award of resurface contract 23-01, Various Roads in Jackson White River Township, EMB Paving LLC, in an amount of $1,432,69, $432,069.69.
See, they won that by about a thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's on the waiver.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I show a work session after this.
Of you?
Yep.
What is it?
Well, it's on the.
Says demonstration for Commissioner, Board, and Committee Appointment Applications from Chris Mertens.
Mr. Mertens, is it possible to commence that in five minutes, 10 minutes?
Thank you.
Perfect answer. All right.
She tells me that all the time, too, Chris, that I'm perfect. I don't know what's wrong with it.
You know, it just embarrasses him, so.
Yeah, it embarrasses me too, Chris.
Thank you all. You're welcome to come back and see Workday.